All right, it is 6:30 in Reed Field. Please stand and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We apologize for starting a little bit late this evening. I just want to remind everyone on the board to speak clearly, loudly, and into your microphone. This is a continuing request that I want to reinforce. We move to our first item on the agenda, the minutes of the last meeting, December 13th, 2021. I would entertain a motion to accept those minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from 12:13 to 22 with the 21, with the three corrections I sent to Kristen earlier today, which were typos.
Excellent, thank you. We like to make sure those typos get sent so that we can move right along. Any discussion? Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion now? All in favor? Thank you Catherine for your typo help. We move to item 22082, warrants 25 through 28, which are included in your packet. I believe that this is Carol's explanation of the warrants. Carol, whenever you're ready.
The first one.
Oh, you do?
I had December.
Okay, good. Excellent.
And then Carol took over.
All right. I believe that's 25 and 26 for you.
No pressure, Carol.
Sure. I've got 25. I don't know the amount for 26.
It's on page seven of the packet.
Thank you. Does she want it?
I've got it.
She got it.
Okay, so I reviewed warrant 25. The total amount for accounts payable was $41,110.99. Items of interest where we paid the first half of our workers' comp insurance, that was $10,186.80. We also spent $3,000 of grant funds that we had received for age-friendly and conservation. Other than that, it was all regular bills. Anyone have any questions? So I would make a motion to move acceptance of warrants 25A and B and 26, which was payroll, in a total amount of $75,198.69.
I second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to accept warrants 25 and 26. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Thank you very much. There we go. Let's move on to our next warrants. This must be Carol.
Yes, I believe it is.
All right.
So I reviewed the warrants from January 3rd. We have warrant number 27 in the amount of $344,229, which, the things that were kind of out of the norm, included pushing construction, $32,000, fire and tech safety, $4,060, which I think had to do with pumps, to do with pumps. And there was a Kate's Electric, I think, was also for the fire department. Only thing on that one, it was like 957 and it just had like replaced light bulbs or fixtures, but it didn't have anything like this was material and this was labor, which I think most electricians do. So it's hard to tell what was what, but it wasn't huge. It was 957. And then, of course, the school unit was $288,602 and some change. And I think that's it. And then payroll was in there also, is warrant number 28, $17,356.93.
I would make a motion to approve warrants 27 and A and B and 28, in a total of $361,586.73.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept warrants 27 and 28. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Thank you very much. We move to our next item on the agenda, which is Select Board Communications. We have five minutes in case the Select Board would like to address public. Very well. We move to Town Staff Reports. We have 10 minutes set aside for this. We're going to throw it to Eric with his Treasurer's Report with the Town Manager Report after. Eric?
Okay, thank you Dennis. I'm going to be brief with my Treasurer's Report because things looked good and there were no issues that stuck out to me in any meaningful way. And the Town Manager's Report this time around is fairly lengthy. So I will just summarize and say that we have reviewed our accounts through December 31st, 2021. No unusual activity. We've made good progress with the audit. I'm actually quite pleased with where we are relative to where we started, which was a few months late, given the fact that we had to change audit firms. So we're in a very good position there despite starting late. So I think that we'll see, in February would be my best guess for when we'll have audited financials that we can base some budget discussions on. So that's a positive thing. We'd like it sooner, but we didn't have them start until November. So what can you, what can we do? We are continuing to have some challenges with retirement accounts, the ACH contributions. We've had three different account representatives in three months. And John Hancock has been, I mean, they've tried, but they haven't been able to deliver on getting us back on track. I hope that we'll get that done this month. We're working very diligently to get that communication sorted out and make sure that we can honor that commitment that we made. Moving on to the comments for the month, everything should be about 50% revenues and expenditures, seasonal variations aside, of course. In general, receipts are up and revenues are up for the year-to-date and the month-to-date. Expenses are down for the year-to-date and the month-to-date. So that's where we want to be. There are a few odd things that have shown up because of grant funding that's come through, or, for example, the $10,000 donation we had to the fire department that really boosted that department. Makes it look a little different, but it's a very good thing. And then local road revenue came in at a different month than it normally does. I believe it's usually in February. So that one, that one came in and showed ahead of schedule. So a few variances there, but otherwise, things are on track. My review of the expense and revenue summary, I think we're in a pretty good place. I had been worried about solid waste last year, or not last year, last month, but that has normalized and we're very much within tolerances for revenue and expense for that department. So that's my Treasurer's Report. I'm happy to answer any questions anybody has.
Thank you. You can move on.
Okay, I'm gonna take a deep breath here for Town Manager. So Administration of Personnel, I am very pleased to announce that we've hired Matthew Seams and he has joined our maintenance team filling in for Anna Carl. And Matthew's here this afternoon, this evening. I invited him down to introduce you to him and vice versa. So Dennis, I'd be happy to take a pause now if you wanted to hear from him.
I would love that. Matthew, would you mind just stepping to the podium, say your name, and tell us a little bit about yourself, just so that the folks at home know who you are?
Yeah, absolutely. My name is Matthew Seams. My wife and I recently moved to Reed Field last month. So, love the town, community, happy to be here. I accepted the position last month when it was offered to me and started last week. Been shadowing Ben. My history, I've been a professional pilot my entire life, most recently with Lifeline Maine. And after flying for 20 years, I decided to stop and have a better commute and more set schedule. So I'm very happy to be here and I know there's a lot to learn, but I look forward to it.
Wow, there you go. Quite a transition, Matt. It's great. Does anybody have any questions?
How is the bobcat different from the helicopter?
Yeah.
Well, the helicopter can kill you a lot quicker, but...
That's true. It's very true.
No, the bob, you know, it's a hand-eye coordination and...
I suspect you have the skills.
Yeah, in all kinds of it. Excellent.
Yep.
Well, I'm really happy that you're here.
Well, thank you very much.
We really needed a person.
Yeah.
And talking with Eric when he was in the midst of offering you the position, it sounded like you would be a good fit and it's great that you live in town and we'll try not to keep you after hours.
I appreciate it.
Yeah, absolutely.
But it is winter.
Yes, that's right.
That's right. Absolutely. Where did you move from, Matthew?
So we were in Waterville for a while, but originally from New Jersey. So we transferred it up here and we've been looking to move for quite some time. And so finally, it was able to work and we're happy to be here.
Well, we all know Reed Field is a great place to live anyway, so we appreciate it. Anything else from the board? Excellent. Thank you very much, Matthew. We appreciate it. We're glad to have you in town. Thank you. You, there is no reason, unless you just like to, to stick around. We appreciate it. But if you leave, we will not be offended. Eric, you may continue.
Thanks Dennis.
I will be, but it won't matter.
Yeah. You got it. Absolutely. You know it.
All right, so we conducted three interviews for our collections clerk position last week and we expect to make an offer this week. So things are coming together and we're on a roll. I'm really excited to be filling some of those positions. We, let's see, the Town Office will be closed for Martin Luther King Jr. Day on Monday, January 17th, 2022. Dog registrations are due. I think that we're already past the due date and we have the grace period basically this month. If dogs are not registered by the end of this month, there is a state-required penalty that we cannot waive. So please bring in your animals, or not your animals, they can stay in the car. Bring in your documentation and get your animals registered. Thank you.
Just as a side note, those registration fees are, they are, they're not put into the town coffers. It goes to help the state animal, like basically helping to spay and neuter other dogs. Is that correct?
That's correct. And we do have a program. It's, you know, 10 bucks or something like that for the registration. But we, we do have a program for those that might have trouble affording it called the Forever Friends Program. And folks have donated to that program. So if you need any assistance, we're happy to help out.
Go right ahead.
Don't we get a share of that revenue for the administrative?
I'm fairly certain it all goes to the state, but I can check with Teresa about whether there's, if there's a fee, it might be a couple bucks for the agent fee, but I'm not even sure about that.
Thank you.
I'll check on that agent fee. All right.
We were at the cell phones.
Yes.
In case, yes.
We have cell phones for town staff. There's a couple different reasons for this, but one of the primary ones is document retention and management. We've had freedom of access requests from a few different folks for records from town staff. And as staff transition, it makes it hard for us to maintain those records. So this is a way for us to guarantee, not 100%, but 90% that we can maintain that access. And it does help with connectivity and availability of communication. So I did include those numbers here. I'm not going to read them all because they're in print. But we have new numbers for the Town Manager, Maintenance, Maintenance and Sexton, Animal Control and Code Enforcement, in addition to their, what might be their landline numbers. We have been experiencing difficulties with a number of town email accounts and this has been going on for far longer than I would like, but we are working with our IT consultants to sort that out. So if anybody has sent an email and hasn't gotten a response, please do reach out to the Town Office and we will make sure that the communication gets where it needs to. We were hoping to have this figured out this weekend, but the IT gentleman had trouble with some phase of that transition and we're continuing to get through it. Moving on to Comprehensive Plan, we're back to a nearly full committee and we have returned to regular meetings, which is a change from where we were a few months ago. Pulling things together is still a challenge, but we're working diligently to continue to make progress and we are making progress. We need more and better economic and demographic data. A part of the challenge there is resources from KVCOG, but the bigger challenge is that we don't have good numbers from 2020 and we really want to have numbers from 2020 because otherwise we have to go back to 2010 and that's not as reliable in certain areas than 2020 would be. There are some exceptions. With population between 2010 and 2020, the US Census Bureau identified an increase of one individual. So I like to point that out because some things change, some things don't. But we don't know which is which, so we have to try to get the best data available. The last thing I want to point about the Comprehensive Plan is that we are still on schedule for a November 2022 vote. However, it's still tenuous. We're still in a tight timeframe. We still have a lot of work ahead of us and a lot of public engagement to do in the next eight months, eight to 10 months, basically, to be ready for that town meeting in November. Moving on to Fairgrounds and Ball Field Project, and I'll say to the board, jump in anytime if you have a question or comment on any of this. I have received feedback on the information request that was sent out following the joint meeting. If you recall, we put out some, some goalposts for information that we needed from our consultants as well as from the committees that we're working with. I've heard back from two of the three committees and I did get, after some work, get things sorted out with our consultants so that they're within budget and within scope for what we had requested with that $6,000 additional investment that the Select Board agreed to. And so that's going to be on the agenda later on. The, and as I noted, I have received information from two of the three committees and I'm looking forward to hearing from Conservation about what their wants and needs are, which is really how we're trying to approach this with that balancing of wants and needs from the respective groups that are involved. And the Rec Board is focusing on document and process development. I have had a chance to touch base with Hannah and they are working on that and making progress in that direction.
I think it's complete.
Oh, good. Well, that's news to me. So they've made progress since the last time we talked. Awesome.
And by complete, do you mean the planning board application?
No, because they were not to do that yet.
Okay. But will they be able to work on that for the time schedule we set? Do you know? We had said on April 1st.
That wasn't just for them though. That was, we had to have all the other pieces in play for them to go forward.
Right.
They have their piece, I believe.
Perfect. That's great.
I believe we're waiting on conservation mostly.
Excellent.
At this point, the deadline was January 6th, so we're, I gotta call them or email.
Yeah.
But anyway, so that's moving forward. I think we can maintain that schedule. It was a tight schedule to begin with, but I think we're going to be okay. Reed Field Corner and Sidewalk, we are still planning on having an RFP for design services for the Church Road, Reed Field Corner Sidewalk, and that's TBD, but likely after the Winter Roads and Library work, RFPs are released. And we do have a number of RFPs that need to go out and I'll talk about later. And there is a proposal on the January 10th Board Packet for design work in front of the Masonic Hall and Fire Station. So that's for consideration tonight. I'm hoping that gets approved so we can move forward with getting that sidewalk little stub extended and taking care of the parking and safety issues in front of the Masonic Hall. Moving on to streetlights, we have switched to streetlights that are LED. That was sometime in June of 2020, I believe. And over the past 18 months, we've found that we are having some significant savings. And it's about $428 per month. So the initial investment was around $12,000, which fits into that three-year payback period that we were looking at for that investment. So we're already probably almost halfway there with the savings that we've accrued over the last year.
Eric, can I ask a clarifying question?
Yes.
It says here that the town has saved an average of $428 a month. But is that, is that right or is our bill down from $485 to $428 a month? But so then that would...
We were paying almost $500 for those, they're not...
Yeah, the sodium lights.
The sodium lights. Yes, and the LED light bill is only $57 for all those same streetlights.
Gotcha. That's all I want to know. The way it read was, our average bill is now $57 down from $485. Do you see that?
It's the eat shoots and leaves.
Exactly right. That's exactly, a little comma in there. I just want to clarify before I put this on Facebook so everyone knows. Thank you.
Yes, thanks for the clarification.
Yes.
So we do have additional streetlights that are going to be installed. There will be a cost associated with putting those in because unlike the existing streetlights that we've already purchased the infrastructure for from CMP, we're going to have to install some infrastructure, drop lines, transformers, things like that. And I'm waiting on a cost from CMP for that work, but we're in process and the intent is to proceed because that was authorized at a town meeting in, like I think 2020 also, wasn't it? Yeah. Man, COVID took you back a little ways, but so we'll be moving ahead. We'll be moving ahead with that work.
Don't say that word. Can I ask just quickly, the savings down to 57, how extensive was that work? Like, you know, you have several properties here that you're going to work on. How big was that first project?
Well, so what they did is they went and just switched everything that we had that was a, not an LED light, to an LED light. So they had to switch out sometimes the masks as well as the bulbs. And we paid for that through a private contractor, but we also paid off CMP for the value existing in their infrastructure.
But where was that done?
That was done probably 2020.
But I mean, like physically, where? Like, oh, every streetlight in town?
Probably 40 different locations.
Quite extensive.
Yeah, sorry, I couldn't quite understand that.
I have come up with, I think, six streetlights that are not replaced and that's because five of them belong to Kent Hill School and one belongs to the Miranda Cook School District. So they're all right on Route 17.
Very good.
But, so every other streetlight in Reed Field is what was done on the initial project.
That was a lot. Good. Thank you.
Yeah, sorry, sorry for that confusion. And so basically, we're continuing with a similar program, getting those, or actually, these are installations. So these were new, new infrastructure, really with a eye toward public safety. Those areas that we're at include, and I'll read these because I think it's important, Gordon Road and Route 17, Plains Road and Route 17, Old Fairgrounds Road and Route 17, P Ridge Road and Lane Road, and North Road and Wings Mills Road, dark intersections where we've had problems in the past. So I'm looking forward to getting those cleaned up. Moving on to the Fire Station Sprinkler System, this RFP has been issued and we are having a mandatory site visit scheduled for this Thursday with initial responses that were, that were positive. I had three or four companies say they would definitely be there. So that's exactly the kind of response we were hoping for. And there may be a few that show up that didn't just call and say, hey, we're excited we'll be there. We do expect to review that proposal in February at the 15th, February 15th Select Board Meeting. And hopefully we'll have a good number that's within budget. If not, we'll have some discussion. And some explaining to do. Okay, so moving on to Maintenance and Infrastructure, we do have the heat pumps installed here and that one's working now, Catherine.
Oh, it was working before. Oh, is it oscillating now?
I think so, yeah. Or at least it was.
Okay.
Yeah, anyway, we have heat pumps at the second floor of Gile Hall now.
Almost level of plump.
Almost. I didn't put them up, so you can't blame me.
I know. If you had done it, it would have been all right. Would have been square. Yeah.
All right, so the light winter weather to date has helped, I'm gonna move on from that, helped to ease some of the burden on the maintenance staff. It's given them an opportunity to do more training and really start to catch up on things internally that need to be taken care of. Crack ceiling is scheduled and expected to happen in the spring. We intend to issue an RFP for winter road maintenance this month and that's for a service in the winter of 2022, 2023. I have met a few times with the Town of Winthrop to discuss the possibility of inter-local collaboration on that component. However, it looks fairly unlikely at this point because of the operational hurdles that would need to be overcome. We would need to get some staff that's additional and would have to be part-time. We would essentially have to build a Public Works type facility and purchase a bunch of new equipment for the Town of Reed Field and they would then just bill us for it. And that's not really what we're looking to do. So it looks as though that's probably not an option. They are certainly interested in being a support for us if we get into a bind. And it doesn't mean that interlocal stuff isn't completely off the picture, off the books, but it's something we want to approach very carefully, given the history in town. So we have an RFP going out for winter road maintenance this month, to reiterate that. So once we settle on that and I have the Fire Station Sprinkler RFP under control, then I expect we'll be getting into the Library Egress and Maintenance RFP likely in February and that would be forward to be completed by the end of the fiscal year. We're not tied or so, as much as we normally are, to the end of the fiscal year because of the fact that we're dealing with bond proceeds that have a three-year life on them. So we do have a bit more time on that. We'll try to get done as soon as possible, but we have a lot of catching up to do. And the next statement there is that we need to squeeze in a few more RFPs, including road paving RFP this, in the next couple of months, and also the Reed Field Corner Improvement RFP for the design work that we're hoping to approve this evening for that work to be done sometime in the spring as well. And the last thing I have for maintenance is that we are trying out the idea of using commercial cleaning services for the town buildings as a way to give our maintenance staff a bit more time to focus on other areas of work. And it's going to be interesting to see what that trade-off looks like with respect to capacity for our full-time staff versus the added cost of having to outsource to a private contractor. So I don't know how that's going to go, but I'll tell you a lot more about it in a few months.
Thank you.
And the last item I have is Transfer Station. And I want to report that we did have a major issue, for those who weren't aware, with our recycling around Christmas. That was due to damage caused by a commercial hauler backing into the unit with the compact can. They took responsibility and repaired it promptly at no cost to the town. And I really want to thank Karen Peterson for staying on that and making sure that they took, that I didn't have to make a phone call and Karen took care of all of it and made sure they paid for it. So that was fantastic because it was a $4,000 to $6,000 bill easily.
Thank you.
The electronic payment system has been installed. It's still in trial mode. Staff identified a number of bugs and so we are waiting on adjustments to the software to make sure that is fully up and running. And also critically, how the fees are assessed because they had it so that the town was eating the cost of the transaction, which is not something we do at the Town Office. It's not something we're obligated to do. And so those fees would be passed to the, to the person using that convenience option. And the last item I have for the Transfer Station is that we have a solid waste and a cycling committee meeting for anybody that's interested this Wednesday, June, January 12th at 5:00 PM.
It's at 5:30.
5:30 PM, sorry. 5:30 PM.
Good. Maybe you need a glass of water after that.
Sorry for the length of the report, but we've a lot going on.
Amen. Go ahead Ralph and then we'll...
I should have jumped in prior to your invitation by the Comprehensive Plan. Is there going to be any kind of public outreach in terms of a survey with specifically pointed questions to the areas that the plan addresses so that we get grassroots feedback?
Yeah, I expect so. I mean, that's part of the, I can't commit for the committee, right? But I can certainly push that direction. We have the resources available. We have a great survey software. And so that, in addition to other outreach methods, is going to be really important to get that feedback.
I think it's imperative to do it because without that grassroots input and some measure as to percentage of participation, the plan loses a lot of that.
I agree.
I think it was in the original schedule if they were going to host one or two different meetings.
Yeah, there will be open, there'll be like open town meetings and things like that.
My thought was that this would be a mailer.
I think that's something that we can figure out with the group.
You're going to get better coverage.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. But I don't, it's, public, public input will be absolutely, it'll be absolutely solicited.
And I think it's an integral component to getting decent input so that the plan amounts to something when it comes out the other end.
Probably sooner than later, so before it gets too far along.
Oh, yeah. Which brings us, I'd like to transition. I'd like to take Boards, Committees, Commissions and Departments and get the rest of communications out of the way so that then we can rearrange our agenda to accommodate Mr. Davinsky. Does that sound... Does that sound okay to everyone? All right. Is there a comprehensive plan update past what you just did, or would you like to just?
Nailed it.
I think you did. So what I'd like to do, we'd just like to say thank you to the Comprehensive Plan Committee Minutes of September twenty second and November seventeenth. The Conservation Commission Minutes of November ninth, which I will add there. It was the the new minutes policy, which the comment was, we're going to do our best. And that's all we ask. Yeah, and then finally, the planning board minutes of November ninth. We appreciate your submission of those as well. We move to the communication portion of public comment. If there are any members of the public that would like to address the select board, now would be your time. Hearing none, we would like to take item twenty two zero seventy six, hear an update on the Winthrop ambulance service from EMS Director Mr. Davinsky. Mr. Davinsky, would you mind going to the podium, please? I appreciate it, it helps everyone hear you, and we are thankful. Excellent. If you have a statement you'd like to read, go for it.
Well, just, I'm here tonight, just kind of going to want to give everybody an update. I obviously keep in communication with the with the town managers and all the communities that we serve, just kind of keeping them an update. Obviously, we're two years into the pandemic, we're two plus years into the pandemic, which is, which at least for us in the public safety realm, has been an event that we never imagined and could never have imagined, quite frankly, that it would have gone on this long. Part of the issue that everyone is having has just been duration. We are two plus years, obviously, in into the pandemic. And that's clearly had quite an effect on on public safety. And as you have, I'm sure, because you're you're well-informed folks, as I'm sure you've looked and you've seen in the news, you've seen in the newspapers, you've seen on the nightly news, both nationally and locally. It has drastically affected EMS responses and EMS staffing. And we in Winthrop are no exception to that, to that phenomenon. Winthrop is staffed by a combination of full-time and per diem type personnel. Part of the way that Winthrop is able to keep the cost for ambulance service down is through the utilization of per diem personnel. Basically, we borrow a lot of other people's full-time employees when they're not working their full-time jobs. And in particularly, most of those people are in public safety, working for another EMS service, whether it's Fire Based or Private or whatever the case may be. We've always been lucky, we're kind of in a ball, we're surrounded by the Augusta fires, the garden fires, you know, the Lewiston area. So it's always been fairly easy to attract folks who are looking to make extra money, who are looking to pick up per diem hours somewhere else. The length of this pandemic has stretched everybody's staffing levels tremendously. Lots of things have happened, obviously, if you've seen the news. We were moving towards staffing shortages prior to the pandemic, much like I don't know, I got a buddy of mine who owns a plumbing business and he's the same way, can't find anybody to train. And, you know, he's in his sixties and he'd like to retire, but there's nobody to take it up and he's got more more business, you know, so to do it. So obviously, we had some issues prior to. However, since the pandemic has started, we've had some folks who have obviously reevaluated. Folks who are on the on the borderline, who are that close to retiring or going to to another percussion, who decided now is a good time to do that. We had some folks who moved on laterally to other positions, which happens in our business quite often. We have a lot of folks who move on, they will become nurses, PAs, et cetera. So there's always a little bit of a draw that goes there. The pandemic, unfortunately, wound up causing us problems in two areas. And for us, particularly here in Winthrop, as I mentioned before, well, we're so reliant on per diem personnel. It was the effect that it had on the services around us. The vaccine mandate didn't affect Winthrop Ambulance at all. We lost no one as a result of the vaccine mandate. So that's a that's a credit to our employees, to credit to the to the information that was out there. However, we had services around us who did. And as a result, those services became shorthanded. Those full-time departments around us, where those per diem personnel come from, we'll take the example, they work for Fire Department ABC. In order for Fire Department ABC to deal with their staffing shortages, they're ordering in their folks on a regular basis. So you may come to the end of your twenty-four hour shift at that particular department. And they are four guys short on the next shift coming on, but four guys from that outgoing shift get ordered in. The result that that has on an operation like Winthrop is the fact that you go from per diems who have an availability frequency of this to now all of a sudden that availability frequency shifts to this. And I kid you not, we have probably seen, literally in some of our folks, we have seen a forty to sixty percent reduction in people's availabilities. And as a result, that greatly impacts our ability to staff on a day-to-day basis. So as part of the update, just kind of letting you know, there will be times, despite the fact that we have really got through the last year by using both the deputy chief and myself to fill in in our staffing model. There are times when instead of two ambulances on duty, we're down to one ambulance on duty. There's never going to be a time where we're going to have zero ambulances on duty. But there are going to be times where we have one. And that is something, I'm going, I'm starting my twenty-seventh year here. This is, I have been in EMS for thirty-six years. I thought I'd seen about everything. Wrong. So so what I want to just point out is the fact that there is stress on the staffing model. And as a result, there is greater utilization of mutual aid. We're utilizing mutual aid more, meaning we're having other services come in and help us with calls. Conversely, we're responding to help them with calls. So it's a little bit of a give and take. On any given year, we respond to somewhere between a hundred and twenty-five and a hundred and thirty-five EMS calls in the town of Reed Field. That has been statistically, that has been steady for years. All seven communities that that we cover, we enter an annual call volume of about two thousand calls per year. And that's that's just our emergency call volume. So we've needed to bring in, since the beginning of the year, we've had mutual aid come in eighteen times to assist us with calls. And we have gone out seven times to assist, and that's not counting, I don't think I ran the number to see how many times I've gone to Leeds to cover for Turner. But that's a stretch and keeping in mind that the staffing model for Central Maine, in the way that EMS and public safety is run, is much different than Southern Maine. Southern Maine, nearly every town and city has their own public safety department. And you go down there, everyone's got their own ambulance service, they've all got their own fire departments, they've all got their own police departments. When you get above the top some line, as they like to say, it becomes regional. And we're all responsible for multiple, multiple towns. Gardner's doing nine, I'm doing seven, Augusta's doing three or four, Delta's doing, I forget how many. So it's a regional approach and that works from a cost-saving standpoint. But when you get into a situation like this, you are going to get into times where you're going to have delays in calls response. So we're working to try and fix that. Part of what has aggravated that whole thing has been, I'm sure you guys have all seen this, wages. It has become very much a market where it's more demand than there is supply. And as a result, the cost goes up when you have an economic model like that. Well, EMS wages have have risen an average of five to seven dollars an hour, basically since July. Which, for EMS, and again, for somebody that's been doing this for a while, or like my daughter says, forever. That's a seismic shift. I can remember when I started as a paramedic, I was making, I think it was eight dollars and thirty-five cents an hour, I thought I was all that in a bag of chips. That's not the case now, paramedics now are in the neighborhood of thirty to thirty-two dollars an hour. And that's up from what was around a market value of anywhere between twenty and twenty-three dollars an hour. So town of Winthrop, we've dealt with with that. We're going to be making some wage adjustments as a result of doing some budget reallocation within the department. And we're going to be taking a stab at increasing our hourly rates. We're going to do that hopefully here very soon and then look to to also augment that with the new budget in July. As a result, a little fair warning here, Dr. Eric, kind of warned him. That means your bill is going to be bigger come July first. I don't know what that is, it's not going to be seismic, you're not going to, you're not going to get it and go, oh my, oh my word. There are instances on the coast, and I'm sure you've all read the newspapers, incidents on the coast where assessments have gone up twenty, thirty, forty, fifty thousand dollars in some of these communities. So we're not, we're not talking that seismic. But they're just giving you a heads up, there will be, we've just started into the budget process, literally today. So we're not sure what that is, but going to give you a heads up, that's where it's going to be. And the idea again there will be to hopefully make sure that we're staffing two ambulances every day, paramedic level, covering our calls, doing what we need to do.
Thank you, that was comprehensive. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Davinsky while he is here?
Oh, just, there probably isn't an answer to this, but what can we as a community that participates in your service do to help other than pay the bill when?
Well, you know, that's that's an excellent question, and I'm I'm glad that you asked that. I wish I had a really good answer for that. One of the things that'll need to happen is, and again, because I have been, I started in EMS in nineteen eighty or eighty-five, somewhere in there. One of the things that we used to do was, we had a concept where it was called, it was called Grow Your Own. And what we did was, we invested in people within the community and assisted them in going to EMT school or holding EMT programs or or whatnot. And then assisting them or paying for them to advance their licensure level as they went up. So what we're going to have to do now, and we've already started that, is to aim at a younger workforce that we can then kind of groom as they come up through. I would suggest that probably one of the things that we can do is to encourage our younger folks to look seriously at the healthcare field. And in particular EMS, whether it's private, Fire Based, third-party like Winthrop is, to try and get them into those fields and then to encourage the school departments within, particularly the high schools within each of these communities, to then try and funnel folks towards the healthcare or the public safety end of things. And that will require linkage with us. But I got to tell you, I worked in a couple of communities when I started my career where we had very strong high school student rescue programs. And I tell you, there were a bunch of people that came out of those programs who wanted with careers in this, so that would be a help.
Do you have a team within your organization now that could say, go to RSU thirty-eight or Winthrop to begin to preach the gospel, so to speak?
My deputy chief's actually working on a concept right now, we talked about it, we talked about it today. I've already had some some thumbnail conversations with with the folks in Winthrop. And yeah, we need to do that, and that that really gets back towards, I think, making a swing, and I'm preaching to the wrong body here for that. But it really gets back to making a swing to getting back to where we used to do vocational training and education at the high school level that we've and I had kids that just graduated, so I'm just as guilty. I was like, no, you're all going to college, hopefully you're all going to make a hundred grand, sitting on your couch in your pajamas.
They're all coming home.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, doing whatever people do. No, but no, we need to return to a strong vocational education type of a system, and and when you do that, public safety is part of that.
Yeah, this is Sean, that there's a there's a great component of ARPA funds coming into the state, into the main pre-partship program, there's focusing on CTEs and you know, that sort of pre-med medical sort of training in terms of sort of some of that infrastructure like that, you know, what's available for schools to offer their CTE programming and able to get more kids into traditional pathways. And the funding that's coming is exceptional, so.
Yes, and and the opportunities are there, I mean, you know, quite frankly, and Dennis, you know my son.
Yes, sir.
You know, my son did got about three quarters of the way through college and decided, well, I'm not really sure where I'm going with this. And has and has gotten into a vocation. And, you know, the interesting thing is, he'll be making more money than I am by the time he's twenty-four. So the need is there, obviously.
Catherine?
Does Capital Area Technical Center, is that their name still?
Yep.
They have a program?
They do. They do, and the the problem with the CATC program is, there's only so many seats, from what I understand, personally, district, am I right?
I know that RSU nine, where I used to work, has a program. So I think that's a good thing that we can do is to promote other towns, making sure that their regional technical centers have a program, and they don't, to get in touch with the people who can help them set that up.
Yeah, and and I think that's absolutely valid. I have to say, I was contacted by a member of the public, a Reed Field resident, and, you know, was was told about, you know, their situation, et cetera. And one of the things that they had mentioned was about scholarships at the school. An example of, you know, if you are interested in following this career path, there may be a specialized scholarship for you. I don't think it's appropriate for the select board to pursue that in in terms of that scholarship. But I want to say, and this is what I told this this person, the high school has a mechanism where you can sponsor and donate towards scholarships that are given out at the end of the year. If that is something that if we feel strongly enough about, it would be a tremendous, I think, boon to the situation to offer and say, this is a scholarship specifically for these types of careers. And so that's something that I also think, in addition to the vocational learning with, like you said, with CATC, you know, there's limited spots. But I think that that's also a valid thing. John, can I ask you one question, just just so that we can clear it out?
Absolutely.
When I have an emergency and I need to call the Winthrop ambulance service, is there any reason for me to doubt or be hesitant about the amount of time it may be to there? It can, can you say that that you're still providing a professional level of service to to the members of our town?
Absolutely.
And I thought so, and I just, I'm glad to hear it, because I think sometimes that gets lost in some of the noise of all the staffing and the money. But I I I think it's absolutely appropriate to say, if I need the Winthrop ambulance service, they'll be there.
Yes, and if we're unable to be there, even if we were at full staff, there there are times where I can have two or three trucks on duty, and that's still not enough. That's why we have mutual aid agreements with all of the EMS agencies around us. If I'm busy and I need help, I can call on this one or this one or this one, they will send me help. They do it immediately, it's seamless, it goes from from the P S A, who takes the emergency call, it goes to our dispatch center, our dispatch center then talks to the other dispatch center, and that resource is automatically dispatched. The good thing is, is that geographically, you guys are in a fairly good position here where even a mutual aid response only adds sometimes four, five, six minutes to the total, depending on where it is. And depending on where the mutual aid unit's coming from.
Thank you, John, I appreciate your answer.
Sure.
Go ahead, Carol.
I know for CATC, I believe, Miranda Cook did not hit their their volume, they were recruiting really hard.
Good.
I think there were positions available still to go there, so that's just at a local level.
Really?
I'm gonna ask, because it was brought up in your letter, so it says, you guys are fortunate to nearly have a hundred percent vaccinated staff. But did, I think you said that you are fully vaccinated, your staff?
We have one person who's got an exemption.
Okay.
One of our staff members that has an exemption, but we really didn't have a choice. We're we're under state mandate that anybody in EMS, if you're working the field, you must be vaccinated or have a medical exemption after starting that, attempting the series. So we're we're extremely fortunate, I mean, I, we had many services around us who had issues. Had issues, and obviously their issues have become my issues.
Okay, and that was a medical exemption, then, the one that's not? Okay, so I just have to. Point out that there's a collaboration, I guess, with our fire department and your EMS people, and we have now. I guess laid off some firefighters that wouldn't get vaccinated. And so I got a couple of calls over the weekend about how does this affect the fire department. Policy, and I said, unless the policy's changed, it, it won't be changed, but now there's some collaboration and some concern about. Maybe other departments that we work with. May not be vaccinated. So I'm just putting it out there. So I did get.
Yeah, I might have to, that, that sounds more like a Chief Lee issue than mine. You know, what I can tell you is that we, we certainly make, we have enough personal protective equipment. I, before. I started doing this, which was my, kind of my avocation, as when I came into college and before it became my full-time vocation. I worked as a purchasing manager, so we were able to be quite successful with regards to sourcing PPE during. During the pandemic, especially during the early phases. So we have that, we can offer that on scene to, you know, to fire members. You know, because there are times, we've had times where sometimes I respond with an ambulance by myself, you know, comes in as a lift assist. Of course, the last time I did that, the patient was probably twice my size and. Okay, and luckily, a couple of guys in the fire department showed up and I was like, oh, hold on, let's go out to the truck, we'll get you some gloves, we'll get you a mask, we'll get you situated. So that you're protected, because as far as I'm concerned, if they're assisting us, we want to make sure that they're protected.
I understand. It just, but the consistency between the policies, it was, it was raised.
Yeah, I, I, I think that's, again, that's a, that's a state issue because main EMS oversees. Whether you're fire-based or whatever, they, they only oversee the EMS agencies. They don't oversee the fire. So they're under their own.
Thank you.
I really appreciate you taking the time to come and meet with us in person. I think it's really valuable and it's, it's great, the service that you provide for our community and have over many, many years.
Forty-three.
Three?
Forty-three.
Oh, forty-three. And the fact that you had been able until the pandemic, at least, to be able to have a. Vehicle stationed here in Reedfield part of the time, I think was really great for the surrounding communities.
Oh, yeah.
And we look forward to having you back.
We look forward to being back. I would, my, my guys would really like to see the, the, the new digs and. Yeah, we spectacular. I'm really hoping, we're hoping against hope that at some point, things get back to normal. But this is, this is just one of those hiccups, and, and again, we've been partners for forty-three years. The service started together in nineteen seventy-eight. So we really hope, we appreciate your support, and we look forward to the day when things kind of settle down and, and we can do that. Because it certainly helps us. When we're able to staff up here, it cuts our response times to Reedfield as well as to Fayetteville, Mount Vernon, so it's a benefit to everyone.
All right. Well, if there's no further discussion, anybody else, it'd be nice to move on, honor the rest of the agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, John. Appreciate it very much for you coming in. Thank you.
Feel free to get in touch with me.
You got it, and thank you to the board.
The EOP out of order also.
Sure. Does anybody have any objections to moving on to item twenty-two zero eighty-five, a review of the emergency operations plan? We have fifteen minutes for item twenty-two oh eight-five under new business, review the emergency operations plan. And I don't know if we should turn this over to Eric, Mr. May. What would you like to do?
I'll, I'll start.
Thank you, sir.
And I'll just say that this is the. Revision of what was presented to the board the last meeting. We did make some changes to. Generally add more, more accountability and more clarity on who is responsible for what and when.
Excuse me, can you tell us what, does anyone know what page this is at? Thank you, Carol. Thanks, Eric.
Yeah, sorry. And so there are some just administrative changes, but those, those were generally presented prior. But again, the substantive piece is adding that, and I'm looking at seventy-six right now. The. Accountability i- is a big piece of this, and so in a couple of points throughout, we did name names as far as positions and who was responsible. I also added to the appendices a, a sample tracking form to help with the annual review of this document. And one of the operational changes that was included, and I'm looking specifically. At. What section is it? The section regarding. The operations centers, the emergency operations centers and the emergency kits. That we would be transitioning those from non-municipal buildings to municipal buildings. So in the past, we've, we have, have. So currently have kits at the elementary school, middle school and Kent Hill school. But those are not always accessible to us, particularly during the pandemic, or if, if it's during the summer break, or if they're closed for the evening. And so we are looking at. Adding site at the transfer station, so we'll have three active sites for our emergency operation kits. And potential emergency operations centers and. And maintaining a bit more control over that flow and that, that part of our plan, which is always good to have. Doesn't mean we can't and won't partner. We absolutely will partner. With the RSU if, if the need arises, and, and so that's still on the table. We're just taking more, more control over where we keep our resources. So that was a big change there, and other than that, like I said, we did set some timeframes and some goals for when we wanted to have these activities take place. Also, the appendices were updated to particularly the, the listings of all of our board members. All of our staff members and other personnel identified in this plan that. Whose names and information has changed. So I will say that this is not a, a full, a complete revamp of this plan. When it comes to the appendices, because we still have to do the inspection of the kits that are, that are out there in the world. We also need to go back and make sure the radios are working, as Chief Mac mentioned last time around. And we have to update still the business listings and the emergency contact lists. But those will be a follow-up item to what I hope will be an approval with edits of, of this plan tonight.
Thank you.
In reading through this, I was very pleased with the updates, Eric. I think they're all timely and appropriate. I don't know if you've had a chance to look at them, Lee and Mike. They seem reasonable. It's on page one hundred in our packet, page. Twenty-nine of the actual document, the changes in the location of the kits. And when they'll be inspected. I, I think this is a good step forward and. I guess I'd like to ask Lee or Eric what you would like us to do to be ready for our next meeting at the. End of January, and we're going to do a run-through at the fire station.
Thank you.
I think just read through the EOP, then we'll just do a quick tabletop. You know, make a scenario that something happened and just run down through it. Step by step.
I don't, yeah.
Does that mean that, especially since we have two new members, and I don't know if we've done one of these since Ralph has been here, I think we did one with Dennis. But what is a quick run-through? So you'll give us a scenario.
Scenario.
Then will you walk us through how it would unfold?
We'll walk through. How the EOP comes into it. I mean, you guys are pretty much all administrative stuff, so I think Teresa being there. Because she's, she's the bean counter and all that. She, she, she wears the pants when money comes to us. So I, I think just having everybody go through and be familiar with it.
And in this case, would a scenario lead, just for an example, be, let's say, at the ice rink at Kent's Hill. They have a leak of the ammonia that helps keep.
Oh, boy, that'd be a good one.
That'd be a good one, right? That would be the type of, you know, that would be an example of a, of a.
Or a tanker truck crashing up by raise.
Yes, sir.
Probably more, that, that's probably more going to be something that could happen.
Gotcha.
Kent Hill, hopefully that doesn't.
Right. Well, I just mentioned that because when we were in the comprehensive plan, talking about public safety. Chris, the, the headmaster did mention, you know, there is, there is that.
There's a lot of, lot of ammonia. They've actually met with the state probably in the past three or four years. And updated all of their emergency response. They've got.
Right, they have their own sort of.
Gas meter and stuff up there. That, that's going to be a large event.
Gotcha. I, I just, I just was making sure that it's, it's sort of clear that we have that.
It would be, we, we pick on Kent Hill quite frequently when we do scenarios, so maybe this time we'll pick on tanker truck.
Understood. Anybody else more for Chief? Go ahead, Carol.
Just a very simple question. Whenever we refer to Reedfield, we are referring to Reedfield and Kent Hill. Is that always encompassed since we're like a voting block? Yes, thank you.
Always.
Kent Hill is kind of a neighborhood of Reedfield.
Okay.
So the tax address for anyone in Reedfield is always Reedfield oh four three five five. You can have a mailing address that's Kent Hill, but that's really all that it involves.
And then like, there was someplace where it talks about locations being in high school and the middle school. It's almost a single entity, but I don't know, but we talk about them separately. I know they have different infrastructures and the parking's the same and. But anyway.
Yeah, and we're going to be consolidating, again, we shouldn't be, with our plan, we're trying to get away from engaging with those entities because. Not because they're not a good partner, but just because it adds the complexity of us trying to manage our own affairs, so. So hopefully we don't have to worry about that happens, edits go through.
Perfect.
Ralph, go ahead.
Do we have memos of understanding with surrounding communities? I think one of the biggest things this town might be, if you have a tanker car go off the rail somewhere, you have mass evacuation in terms of. Sheltering arrangements. Are we leaving that exclusively to the Red Cross to manage for us?
No, I mean, depending on what the, what the emergency is, it's an automatic mutual aid call. For the five towns, anything major like that, and the bigger it goes, the whole idea is to keep it as small as you can, but the bigger it goes, if it. Obviously, if it's hazmat, that's going to bring in the hazmat team, that's going to bring in Keneback EMA. So just those resources, then if we have the, do shelters, Keneback EMA steps in, we'll set up, you know. Either work with. Motels or hotels, depending on how big it is.
That sort of thing if we had.
It's a collaboration.
Forty or fifty families.
No, it's, it's a collaboration.
Okay.
It, it becomes a, you know. A scene that incorporates a whole bunch of moving pieces.
There is a piece I'd just like everyone to note that there is training that's required for select board members. As well as town employees, but we're supposed to do that within ninety days of being elected. So if any of us haven't done that, or we don't have our certifications, we need to get in touch with whoever we took our course from. In Augusta, because we haven't gotten ours yet.
Well, so, so, yeah, Sean Goodwin, Ken, Kenneb County EMA. But also the, the one hundred, seven hundred courses required for the select board, you can take those online. You just Google NIMS or ICS one hundred, seven hundred, and that whole course list come up and it's all available online. Which is fantastic. Great. Takes a couple hours. It's, 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 it's not the, the, the most exciting thing you'll ever do, but it, but it's, it's, it's helpful.
Absolutely. I think anytime you can be a, a part of helping with public safety, it's worth it, so. Thank you very much. Anything else for the EOP, or we'll let these fine gentlemen saunter on.
Eric, we need to make a motion to approve this, yes?
Oh, yes, there will be.
So I would make a motion to accept the updated EOP as presented. And request that the updates take, the needed updates take place prior to our tabletop.
All right, it's been moved in second to accept the EOP as presented with changes before the tabletop. Is there any discussion about this?
Just one point, that if we're meeting at the fire station, everybody will be required to be masked. We're not here, but the fire station will.
Absolutely, thank you. All in favor? Thank you very much. As always, you may leave or stick around, because it's a fun time. Moving back to the agenda, yes, absolutely. We don't take it personally, don't worry. We move on to appointments, reappointments and resignation, catching up with the. Agenda, item twenty-two eighty-three, consider the resignation of William Godfrey from the planning board. The letter was in there. He now lives in Florida. It's going to be difficult for him to pull that, quite a commute. I'd entertain a motion to accept this resignation.
I'll make a motion to accept the resignation of William Godfrey from the planning board effective immediately with regrets.
It's been moved in second to accept the resignation, William Godfrey from the planning board. Is there further discussion? All in favor. Thank you for your service, Bill. We appreciate it. In a obvious, great twist. Item twenty-two eighty-four is to consider the appointment of Noel Mador to the planning for, for it as a full member. He was previously an alternate. So again, having the alternates always nice to have. Is there any, anything we need to know about this, Eric?
Just that the term would be to basically be replacing or filling the term that Bill Godfrey vacated.
That sounds good. Ralph?
Just for the sake of the exercise and a document that's coming to us a little bit later on. Is he the senior alternate on this board?
He, he is the alternate on the board.
The alternate.
The singular.
The point is move.
We will be looking for, as always, two alternates, but, but I'd like to start with one.
Excellent.
A motion to. Upgrade, I guess, just appoint Noel Mador to the planning board as a full member to. To finish out the term just vacated by Bill Godfrey.
It's been moved in second to appoint Noel Mador to the planning board as a full member. Is there any discussion? All in favor. Thank you very much. We move on to old business. We have item twenty-one oh six-eight, which is to consider next step for investigating broadband internet. Let's get that update from Catherine or Eric.
Okay, um, well, so it's been pretty quiet on that front, and this will be a short and brief update. So we are expecting to have several meetings over the next couple of weeks with various. Proposals coming in with the WKLCBA and with the Reedfield Broadband Committee. And we should have a good report out for our next meeting on the thirty-first, December.
Yeah, same with thirty.
The mids come in next Monday, so a week from today. And it will take quite a bit of work to figure out what they mean. Because it isn't just the bottom line. You don't necessarily want to take the cheapest or the most expensive. You want to take the best service. So anyway, it's very exciting and we're looking forward and everybody's kind of nervous. Just intensive waiting.
And FAYET, have they decided what they want to do?
FAYET is having a special town meeting on the fifteenth of February. Right now, they know they're having an article to ask the town to go with Red Zone, which is the wireless. Low-band internet service. And there may be a second article that asks them if they want to go with any of the proposals that are coming in, but they don't know that yet.
I, I hope that we can make quick work of, you know, thorough, but quick work, because I definitely have heard. Since the vote, right, since the last town meeting, people like, so where are we at with all that money we talked about and talking about internets? So.
Oh, we won't be dragging our feet, but it, when we get the proposals on Monday, we won't be able to say, say Tuesday morning, okay, here's what it all needs.
But it's good that we're still, we're in an active moving pattern, because I think it's good to report out.
Yes, I, I think certainly by the thirty-first of January, we'll have a really good firm handle on it, because all of the various towns will have met together. And separately with their own committees. and separately with their own committees, and we'll be able to say, this is what we think we'd like to do.
To the select boards who will then move it along however I think is appropriate.
For each town.
Yeah.
Right.
Hopefully as a collective, uh, if that works out, because there's value in that, but, uh, but we'll, we'll see. Uh, it, it's, it's been a, a very interesting multi-year. I mean, I think we're in the fourth year now of working collaboratively with these towns to, to head this direction. So we'll see what happens with that, but I, I am optimistic that we're gonna get some good numbers, um, that we will have reliable information, uh, and that we can then present that to the select board to make the best decision, um, possible. To, to, I guess, not the final decision, but to bring something to town meeting vote, because that is the last piece of this, is that we, we do need to bring all of this, um, basically the proposal that we come up with, back to the voters for final approval and final authorization for that money. Um, that money, uh, if you recall, was, was, was put out there as, as a, um, as a, as a kind of a round number, as a way to give us tools to help apply for grants and things like that. So, um, I know people want to spend the money, but we, we don't want to spend it just yet. Um, so, uh, I think, um, I think we have a little bit, a little bit more work, a few more steps, uh, but I think we're approaching it the right way.
Excellent.
Yeah, we've set a model that other towns are somewhat envious of.
That's how we roll. Um, if there's nothing else about item twenty-two oh six eight, I'd like to move on to twenty-two zero fifty-one, which is to consider the final approval of revised Board Committee and Commission's Guide and process for distribution. We have discussed this, uh, at, at our last few meetings. Um, changes were talked about, discussed, all of those hopefully have made it to this final copy. Uh, is there anything that you'd like to add, Eric?
Uh, we have a few more edits, but I'm hoping this one can be accepted with, with edits.
To come.
Can have the select board, uh, sign it, uh, after, um, uh, after those final edits are made when they come in for a warrant, but, um, just a few, and all that Catherine mentioned what they are. Um, but, uh, I did meet with Catherine, we went through all the proposed changes, and I think we have a very solid document, uh, and if not, it's a policy, so we can change it whenever we like.
Good.
Uh, yeah, Eric did a great job with it. It was everything that we had talked about, nothing else that was new. It's in there. Um, the, the one change after we adopted at our last meeting, the FOAA policy, was Eric went back and looked at what we had in here. We had talked about having every board and committee and commission member complete the FOAA training. That would be upwards of a hundred people, and we would have to track all of that. And so what Eric did was he looked at who is required by law to have FOAA training. And so on page thirty-seven in the packet, it lists that it is the, it's section three E on page three of the document for interested. Those four committees are the budget committee, the planning board, the school board, and the select board. Uh.
Page thirty-seven in the pack.
So since we did such a thorough job on putting everything on each board, committee and commission page, um, my suggestion to Eric today was that we add one sentence onto the pages of those four committees that says you need to have a training. Because I, I think the way we're envisioning people will use this document is if I'm applying for a, a opening on the cemetery committee, I'm gonna go and read the cemetery committee page. I'm not gonna read through every committee in town. I'll read through the general part and then the committee I'm applying to. Um, so we, we really need to have that FOAA training on those four pages. So I'll make a motion, then you guys can decide if you like it or not.
Hang on one second, did you have something to add?
Just a quick thing that I noticed in going through is page thirty-eight point five, um, where that an open position will be advertised for minimum of ten days. That seems kind of short. Does it not? I don't know. Like, we're trying to, like, broaden the participation in the town to get on some of these boards, and, um, the messenger, I think, is one of the places is posted, but that comes out once a month. That might be one of the places that is may reach a lot of people. I don't know. I just, I thought that time of ten days was a little bit.
What's a, it's a minimum of ten days?
Yeah.
So, so it could be until it's filled technically, right?
Uh, absolutely could be, and point well taken about that, um, that that's the, that's what it's been, um, so that wasn't a change, uh, but, um, I think that the, the intent, if I remember correctly, because we did go through this, uh, five years ago, uh, was that, um, there was a balance between having, uh, a vacant position, um, you know, appointing someone who is interested and, um, or waiting it go for, for a month or so. So, um, I, I think the minimum is, is the key word there, but I, um, it's really up to the select board how you'd like to pursue that. I'm not, um, I guess, I'm not way one way or the other, really.
Well, the way we have the timing set up is that by May first, you have to decide if you're, May first or June first?
May first.
May first, you have to decide if you're going to go for reappointment. And then we, if you're going to be reappointed, that's by June first, because reappointments, I think it's June first.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, because they happen July one effectively.
Right, because it's a July one effective date, so there's just a thirty-day period in there. So by having a minimum of ten days, if it's a reappointment or you're going to, um, if you're serving and you're going to leave, you have to give that thirty-day notice if it's at the end of your term.
I mean, first.
Um, so you, you automatically get thirty days on anything like that. So on all other positions, it's that minimum of ten days.
And it did say something like, one of the places where it is advertises the post office, Reed Field and Kent Hill, does that, I don't know if I've ever seen that.
I don't know if I have either.
Okay, and maybe that's something like in our, the front window of the post office, we can have a little spot that.
We got a little mouse hold it up.
What's that?
I'm just playing my usual sarcastic stuff.
Have a little mouse hold it up.
It's a good point, because we do, uh, the.
That's a shout out to Justine.
Yes.
Go Justine.
But I was gonna like contact Kristen or somebody and say, what openings do you have right now and what's the term, and just put a, a list that may be changeable very quickly.
That'd be really easy to do, because we do for the messenger every month, you have those vacancies listed, um, and, and right now they're few, which is wonderful.
Yeah.
But we certainly have some areas where it's consistent. Uh, and I guess one thing I will note is that the other change that was substantive to this, um, is that I did, um, I almost forgot, um, change, um, the, uh, membership for the road committee from seven down to five, um, because we've had, uh, two plus vacancies on that committee for three or four years now, probably, uh, and we, we increased it to seven at one point, because we had somebody that wanted to be on above the five, uh, and we were never able to get to seven. Um, the only board that has seven in this town is the planning board, uh, and I think that makes sense. So I, I just said, you know, let's call it, uh, it makes sense for that to be a five-member board, like pretty much everything else, other than the rec board, which is like fifteen or something, so.
It's not.
Ralph, go ahead.
I want to vote on this tonight. We've been beating this horse for a long time, and there isn't much left of it.
Great.
Um, but I do have one issue, and it pertains to problems that I've had in minutes from the day I started on this board. Page thirty, and I don't think we need to make a change now. I talked to Eric about this a little bit today, and as, as he notes, his policy, page thirty.
Of, of the document.
Of the document.
Oh, oh.
I will have that number for you in just a moment. That's page sixty-four in our package.
And basically, it's section B, item I. Unapproved minutes shall be submitted to the town clerk within one meet, within one meet, week of the meeting being held. That's a good first step. However, it doesn't talk about having it available to the public in draft form. And if you look at our present format for approving minutes, even when people are trying to do their best, uh, there's still a significant interval between actions taken and draft minutes being done, and people actually being able to know about them. So I would like to suggest that put our heads together with the town manager and perhaps add some language that says, you know, because there are administrative issues here with a small staff doing all of this stuff. If they're filed, perhaps we just simply say they are going to be filed, and if you want, you can make a request for them. Otherwise, the problem, the, the primary problem still remains. If they're just filed and they're not available for people to look at, then what's the point? If you're gonna wait another month, maybe more if that commission or whatever doesn't have a quorum to see what actually happened.
So how about if we just use the language that's in four A? You were in section four.
I mean, A.
B, and it says each agenda shall be sent to the town clerk for posting at least three days prior to the meeting. So what if you just put for posting? Unapproved minutes shall be submitted to the town clerk for posting within one week of meeting being held.
As long as that doesn't create extra difficulties, while we're in a big transition right now in terms of a lot of meeting recording protocols and all the rest. I just, I don't want to add another brick to the load.
So you just want to complain, Ralph?
No, I would like to see them there, but I don't.
Did you say that?
He's got a valid, he's got a valid point. Um, no, I, I think, I think it would be a bit of a burden, and I, I talked to Ralph about this. Yeah, it'd be like setting, people are driving sixty, you set the speed limit at forty, and so you better drive forty. Uh, I, I think it's gonna be hard for our boards and committees to comply with this. I think our compliance rate would be abysmal, um, and I would have a hard time, um, shepherding that. But in the long term, I think we can head that direction. I just don't think it's the right time right now.
I, I can also, I, I would also add to this, this is not necessarily a hill I'm gonna die on. Like, I, I, I don't, it, it's, to me, if the agenda is posted so people know, and if I have a lot of care about what's going on in that committee meeting or something, I'm gonna go to that. Um, but, but I agree, I just, like, I, I don't find, like, you know, we, we, we've put it out there, it will be difficult to put into policy something that we cannot enforce. So, so why have the rule if we're, i- i- if, if we, we know that there's gonna be difficulty and a burden to try to enforce it? So I, whereas I understand, and it's nice to know what's going on in these meetings, so that we don't have eight months coming in at the same time. I think the work that has been done on this entire guide sort of indicates that we can do better than that, and the expectation for all of the boards, commissions and committees is to do better than that. Um, so, so that's just how I feel. I feel like I know it's important to you, but I also know that it's.
Should be important to all of us.
Absolutely, and, and for me, it's not. I, I, I know that I'll get the minutes, I know it's on the agenda. If something happens in there that I have a question about, I can find it. But, but I just don't, I, I can't get behind adding the extra burden if we know that it's going to be constantly.
And that's.
Un.
That's why I'm sensitive of this and why I brought it up, but I still think that if you're a member of the public and you look at an agenda, are you actually gonna go to that meeting?
Well, that's.
I, uh, I, I think the odd, the odds are slim and none, and you need to make it as easy and accessible for everyone as humanly possible, because the alternative, yeah, I saw it on the agenda and I should do this, isn't necessarily going to provide the coverage and the availability of the information that should be there in a timely fashion.
Well, I taught English.
I guess I'm complaining, but I think it's, I think it's a legitimate point, and I think we have, I think we have a big problem here with timely filing of minutes. And people have a right to see this stuff and know what's going on, and they should not have to wait a month or maybe more to see what's happening. And I don't think simply an agenda item fulfills that requirement.
Catherine?
I'm with you, Ralph, and with Dennis, so somewhere in the middle here. The next statement says approved minutes will be submitted to the town clerk for filing and posting on the website within one week of approval, and you're okay with that, correct, Eric? That that burden is okay?
Oh, yeah, the approved minutes, we, we, um, if we, if we get them, we don't have an issue with getting them up, um, and getting them to the, I mean, to the select board, getting them up and getting filed, so.
Okay.
That, that, that one's attainable and is being attained consistently now, not a hundred percent of the time, but it's.
It's a half of all.
It's pretty good.
Okay, so implicit in four B I could be that the town clerk could post them on the town website in draft form if there's time, on if there's staff availability. We're just not, the way it's posted right now or written right now is that it's not required, but it's something we could strive towards, and maybe that would help. Um, Ralph, um, we have a new town clerk who's coming into, hopefully, her position full-time if we're hiring a new, um, justice counter clerk. So, um, maybe that's something that might work out, or might not, or might work out in the future. But it, I don't think it precludes doing that.
Yeah.
I- it's just that it's not mandatory.
Sean?
I just want to say that I think people are, are doing this, the people that know. I think that in the last two years, I think there's been something going on in the world, and that some priorities have shifted and the way in which business has been done, and the change and turnover and all these boards, even in the last, in our six months, the amount of people that we've talked about leaving boards and joining boards. I think there are people taking on these responsibilities that don't know these rules, and I think that might be true for some chairs. I think what we have in place in this draft gives us a working platform, and as it is a good policy, it is something if we do feel might need change. But I really think from experience of being on some of these boards, I don't think people know all these rules. I don't think there's been an emphasis as there had, or as there should have been, and maybe that as undertaking this and adopting this policy as written is a good start to enforcing and.
Agreed.
Bringing it back around.
Well, I think we need to share this, not enforce, but I think we need to share this.
So much nicer word.
With the, Eric, please.
Strongly.
We'll start, we'll start.
To disseminate this policy, I mean, all the chairs have seen it, because they all helped me work on it. Uh, well, a couple didn't, but, um, that's okay.
But we have it now.
But they know about it.
Yeah, absolutely.
And so they're aware that it's coming, and I think if Eric can disseminate it to them in final form and say, okay, here are the highlights. Could you guys please focus on this as you're going forward over the next six months to try and put these things into place in your committees? Um, that would seem reasonable, and it's a request, it's not a demand. Um, and the same thing to the town clerk, you know, if there's a way to put draft minutes up, great. If there isn't, okay, we'll work on it and see how this goes.
As an English teacher, sometimes I would tell people to read the book, and then they would just read the Cliff Notes. You're not getting, right, you, 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 you know, regardless of, of, no matter how much information we put out there, they gotta be willing to read the book. So whether it's a, a Cliff Notes and minutes, or whether it's the cut table of contents and the agenda, it's ultimately the responsibility of people who want to find the information to get the information. We can only do as much as we can, and I think that the, the bottom line is, I'm gonna trust this document to help sort of make more consistent the actions of the boards, committees and commissions. So I would entertain a motion to accept this draft.
Okay, so I'm gonna make a motion to accept this draft of the document with the following change. That on each individual page for the budget committee, this is for Kristen's benefit, so she can write it. Uh, the planning board, the school board and the select board, we add this sentence. Members must complete an FOAA training course within thirty days of appointment or reappointment and provide certification to the town clerk.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the Boards, Committees and Commission Guide with the changes indicated by Catherine. Is there any further discussion on this item?
I just want to tell you where that came from. It came from item three E on page three. I didn't make it up. It's in there already.
We appreciate it. You're not making things up. Uh, all in favor? Very well, thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone.
Yes, uh, we've already taken care of item twenty-two oh seven six and twenty-two oh eight five under new business. Uh, now we move to item twenty-two zero eight six. Consider a revised policy on electronic devices, documents and communications. Five minutes for this, Eric, if you will.
Yeah, I'll try to keep it less than that. Uh-huh. So, uh, the, the background on this is that this, uh, truly is and was a part of our personnel policy, um, intended for, um, use by town employees in, uh, their use of town devices and, um, and electronic communications. Uh, as we've just discussed, we are in the. Uh, as we've just discussed, we are in the midst of uh, two years of, of growth and transformation. Uh, around technology, how it's used, who uses it. Uh, we now have more people than ever that are, that are um, using our, our networks that have town email addresses, that have town devices. Um, this was spurred by the, 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 um, the need to have municipal cell phones for. Um, or this revision was, was spurred by that. But as soon as it got into, I realized how much uh, things are changing and that if we want to have. A board and committee chairs setting up their own Zoom meetings here in this room. Uh, if we want to have a, a board and chair, a board and committee secretaries uploading minutes to the website. To facilitate the process of, of communication. Uh, and any number of other things um, that we, we need to expand um, this to include more users. Uh, and uh, be more broad in how we define and consider electronic um, devices and communications. In the past, it was limited to mostly just, you know, email. Excuse me, and use of the internet. Uh, and it wasn't, um, didn't think about things like uh, our, our, our phone system, any cloud backups we have. All these things. So uh, this is an expansion. Uh, this, I, I hope um. Covers the need to. Give people an idea of what we're doing, why we're doing it, uh, and what not to do with this technology. Also focusing very much on the record retention piece. Uh, and the fact that emails and phone calls and phone records and text messages are public records and public communication. We need to be very thoughtful about how those are managed. So um, multi-purpose uh, policy. Uh, I think it's, um, it's well past time for an update. Uh, and again, uh, things like Zoom and the need to have more engagement from our, our, our committee members to make this digital communication work better. Uh, it's really important and this, I hope does that. Uh, so I'm happy to have any questions or comments.
Oh, go ahead, Ralph.
What do we do when our mailbox is full? Come to you and say, what can we get rid of? I mean, because that does.
The one downstairs, you never check or the, the?
No, that one. I'll, I'll, I'll check mine when Dennis opens his.
I done it. I got all my main town in country.
So for electronic.
Mailbox downstairs.
Yeah.
I don't want to read that magazine and throw it away.
Part of the, part of the reason for this is that, um, but the burden of managing a lot of this electronic communication. Um, is falling to me. Um, we are working with our IT consultants to try to manage it, but um, basically talk, talk to me. Uh, and we will um, get that expanded. One of the things that we're doing to help resolve this email issue that we've had for the past three weeks plus. Uh, is switching over to Microsoft Exchange Server that will give us unlimited capacity uh, for our email. Because they'll be stored on our server and not somebody else's. Also, almost unlimited uh, number of email addresses so we can um, thoughtfully. Do more uh, with managing email communications. One of the things I talked with Catherine about was the fact that we don't want to necessarily give every board a committee member their own email address because. I don't have the time to manage a hundred and twenty email addresses. That would be a nightmare. We might look at doing a committee email where the committee members all have access. Um, in the town of Union, that's how they do their select board email. You don't get your own email. You get one email address for the select board. Everybody logs in and reads what's there. Responds to everybody else. It, it's, it's very libertarian, I think, but um, it, um, it works for them. Uh, I, I like the idea of having our own email accounts for the select board to encourage that public communication with the board with some semblance of, of, I won't say privacy, because there is none uh, with those communications. But um, in any event, if you have trouble with technology for the time being, I'm the guy to talk to.
My question today was what constitutes transitory because it says we can delete transitory things. So those are things like. Um, the. The emails that are sent out by the town, like to everybody, the retail transfer station is closing early today because of weather. You can delete those.
Like MMA, mass mailing sort of.
Mass mailing, yes, absolutely. Uh, you can delete any sort of advertising that comes to you, you know, for dating services or whatever. Um, any sort of spam kinds of things, those can be deleted. They're not really deleted. They're out of our mailbox, but they're still somewhere on the server. Um, and so that was really helpful to me as a select board member to know, but other than that, we're supposed to leave everything there. I think we can set up file folders and store things, or we could just pretend most of it doesn't exist and do a little search when you want something. Um, so. My, my just comment to everybody is, once it's in writing, it is there forever. If it's a text message, if it's on a uh, cellphone, if it's on a computer, if it's in writing on a piece of paper, sent through the mail. It's there forever. People can find it. People have copies. Uh, pick up the phone. Bruce Burgoyne, you were a good teacher for that. Uh, it's private. As long as someone was listening in on you. Uh, and it's not filed anywhere, so you don't have to take care of it. I think Sean had a question.
Sean?
So we'll be getting new email addresses?
Nope, it'll be the same email address, um, but hopefully you'll just get emails. Um, I, I apologize again for how.
So you think that's just going to frustrate this? Smoothly transfer over. We won't have to put new information in with pop information and it. Cause as of right now, I get nothing.
Yeah, no, and, and um, I think it's been since mid-December since we've had reliable communication for most of the.
We got a Christmas vacation.
Yeah. So somehow, and this is how perverse this whole thing is. Um, the two board members that had old Gmail accounts that had email forwarded from the server to the Gmail. And then um, when they sent email out, it would automatically uh, change the um, send address to their town email account. For some reason, those two kept working, Catherine and Dennis, um, being legacy. Everybody else, I, and I, I do not know why. Um, but that's not, that's, you know, not, not my wheelhouse. Um, and like I said, I'm, I'm hoping we get this sorted out soon.
So will there be a new place that we log in?
Uh, no, it, it should be the same portal, um, the same online uh, webmail portal that you've been using uh, in the past.
Um, the one that hasn't worked yet.
The one that hasn't worked since mid until late December.
Right, but I haven't been using the portal. I had it set up so it just came to my mail account.
Yeah, yeah, and I, and I have, um, so, so you would need to very likely change the, the pop three account settings and things like that.
You're gonna get those.
I will give you all the little, everything, once it gets figured out, I'll give you all that information.
Yeah, can't wait.
So I would make a motion that we accept the policy on electronic devices, documents and communications as presented in the packet. I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the policy on electronic devices, documents and communications. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Very well. Uh, move to item twenty-two oh eight seven, consider approval for commercial hauler permits for the transfer station in your packet. These appear on page one sixteen and one seventeen. One sixteen is for Simmons Trucking, uh, one seventeen is for Archie's Incorporated. I believe that we can entertain a motion to approve these permits.
I would make a motion to accept the permit applications for Simmons Trucking for Archie's Incorporated. And that is it as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the permit applications for Archie's Incorporated as well as Simmons Trucking. Is there any further discussion?
Just one question.
Go ahead, Ralph.
Um, Archie's has customers that aren't part of our arrangement. How do we know that their MSW isn't coming to our transfer station? Or do we know?
We, we, we don't unless we're doing spot checks.
So it's an honor system.
It's an honor system. Um, we've had accusations. We've never had any, uh, any firm evidence. Um, essentially, they're too busy running routes in the communities that they serve to bother running over to. The town of Mount Vernon to grab a couple extra, uh, you know, households.
So it's not.
To sneak one by us. I don't, I don't think that's an issue. Um.
They have fixed days that they go to Fayette.
Uh, they do. All these uh, haulers have fixed days.
Yeah, fixed day in Reedfield is Thursday.
Right.
They also can't keep staff either, so I don't think they have time.
Yeah, nobody can keep staff. Any further discussion? Oh, Eric, you have your hand raised.
Yeah, I'm trying to be good here.
Do it.
Not to say things.
Uh huh.
Um, we did get one more um, uh, permit application in today. Uh, the, the owners of the business had, had um, uh, experienced some COVID and were unable to, to get things together. So. Uh, Galusha's Waste also submitted an application. Uh, it's been reviewed. I have no problems with it. They paid the fee, so I would ask Catherine to, uh, uh, amend her motion, please, to include Galusha's Waste.
Can we, I would, I would prefer to vote on these two and then add Galusha's if that's okay. I think it'd be easier.
You want to do it.
Parliamentary, uh, parliamentarily speaking.
Sure.
Woo hoo. Um, very well. Uh, all in favor of approving Archie's and Simmons? Thank you very much, Catherine.
To approve the application from Galush, is that all it's called?
Uh, Galusha's Waste.
From Galusha's Waste for a um. Commercial hauler's permit. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the permit given today for Galusha's Waste. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Thank you very much. We move to uh, the acceptance of a one thousand dollar Maine Community Foundation Lifelong Community Fellowship, uh, Fellows Grant Program. Um, Eric, any discussion you'd like to offer on this?
Yeah, uh, so this one um, is another one that um, Romaine had been working on uh, for on our behalf uh, with. Um, the age friendly and the Maine um, Community Foundation. Uh, I, I was aware of this one. Uh, so I, I don't have any issue with accepting this. Uh, it, it was, excuse me, again, a bit out of cycle, but uh, the Maine Community Foundation has traditionally been. One of the better grantors that we've worked with, uh, worked with because they very few conditions. Uh, and are very eager to see this money just put towards the best use in the community with as few barriers as possible. So. Uh, this is another good program. It should be a benefit to our age-friendly committee uh, and uh, help with just community engagement overall.
I'll make a motion to accept a thousand dollar Maine Community Foundation Lifelong Community Fellows Program Grant.
Go ahead, Carl. Oops, either way.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the one thousand dollar Maine Community Foundation Lifelong Community Fellows Program Grant. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Thank you very much. Um. Let's discuss item twenty-two oh eight nine, discuss fiscal year twenty twenty-three budget. We have ten minutes for this.
Or not.
I'm going to shortcut this one because.
Thank you.
Uh, this was more aspirational than anything. I was hoping to have much more um, or, you know, prepared for, for the meeting tonight, but uh, things happen.
Things happen.
So I included the agenda uh, and, and the schedule and we have some highlights showing where we are in the process. Um, we have a discussion uh, of the budget, if available. I, I was smart enough to put that in there two or three years ago. Uh, for this meeting because I know how it gets. Uh, so it is not available. However. We've heard over the past few months, some of the big things coming up, broadband, wages, EMS, uh, all that stuff is out there. Uh, we're going to continue to look at it and we have a meeting this um, Thursday. Uh, to discuss the first set of departments, which is our, generally our administration uh, and the things that I have uh, most um. Uh, in, in, in contributions to, I guess, input. Uh, and so. Uh, we do have that meeting coming up. I want everybody to be aware. Um, you're welcome to attend as select board members, but typically, um, we do the um. Uh, the um, back and forth where the budget committee meets, the select board meets, and then we come together for those joint meetings. So that's where we are in the process. Um, if you have any questions, I'm happy to take them, but otherwise, um, look forward to a. Um, a, a, a draft that's coming out of that budget committee meeting this week.
So we're not required to attend?
We're not required unless it's a joint meeting.
No.
It's only the ones that are in green. Blue and yellow makes green, just like Ziploc.
Yeah, green is important. Uh, those are the ones we pay attention to.
I'll just make note that, again, we are meeting four times in March, so.
Get ready.
Yep. It wouldn't hurt, Eric, if someone sent us a reminder, like the morning of the meetings that are kind of different days. Since three of them are, I think there's a Thursday and a Wednesday meeting.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Absolutely. This is a hellacious schedule and it's, it's, it's only gotten harder every, every year. It gets harder, not easier, so.
But for the new members, this is why some months we now have one meeting. Other times of the year. To kind of even it up, even though it doesn't really help when it is March.
Good. Unless there's more discussion about item twenty-two oh eight nine, I'd like to move on to twenty-two zero ninety, consider legal representation for the town of Reedfield Board of Appeals. Eric?
Okay, uh, so backstory here is that um, we have uh, an appeal before the Board of Appeals. For uh, the um, Safe Space Meeting House twenty-six Mill Stream property. Um, our town attorney has um, currently um, Freddie Flaherty. Basically facilitated, represented the planning board, represented the town uh, through this process of the um, review and consideration of that permit application. The permit application was denied and it's moving to appeal. Uh, best practice, uh, when you have um. You don't want to have the same attorney working for both the planning board and the Board of Appeals. Uh, this um, situation is, is one that, as we've discussed before, is likely to lead to litigation if the result of the Board of Appeals process uh, is adverse to the desires of the applicant. That's not by any means a guaranteed outcome, uh, but we have had a lot of indications that um, that there's going to be litigation. If that's the case, um, including the last lawsuit that was filed uh, from twenty-six Mill Street uh, three, two or three years ago. So um, in order to pro- pro- provide the most protection for the town of Reedfield and our volunteers. Uh, and to maintain the integrity of the process, uh, we do need to have outside counsel available to uh, assist the, the appeals board with their deliberations um, and to um. Uh, to do that work for us. So um, Perkins Thompson comes highly recommended. Um, they have a rate that is within reason. Uh, it's, it's higher than I'd like, but, but I think pretty much every legal bill I pay is higher than I like. Um, it, and so um, I'm hoping that we can just move forward with this. Um, I expect the bill will be somewhere between three and five thousand dollars uh, by the time it's all said and done. That's just a wild guess based on my, a cou- a couple of discussions with um, um, the um, attorney. Uh, that, that is uh, that may be representing us. So um, there's the background, there's the um, the scope. And uh, I believe that we will be well represented by this um, individual on this firm.
Excellent.
Is that the two twenty-five approximately the same rate we're paying Freddie Flaherty?
Uh, for um, their uh, high, high tier counsel, uh, we're at two hundred. Uh, for some of the others, we're at one seventy-five or in that range, one eighty.
So it's not way out of line.
It's not way out of line.
Ralph?
Uh, in the list of billing particulars. Uh, new clients, they want a retainer. I would hope that with a full faith and credit for town of Reedfield, we're not giving them a down payment.
They, they haven't asked for it and I, I'm not going to bring it up.
I think they said they were waiting.
Did they waive it somewhere? Did they say they would waive it?
Oh. I'm not sure if it was in this or the mainland one.
I think it was mainland.
It was, it was mainland, I believe, yeah. But this one, um, uh, when I talked um, with, is it Jim? Is that right? Two hundred or James?
Yep, May, uh, Mazer, Brandon Mazer.
Uh, James.
Oh, James, okay.
Um, when, when speaking with James, we just, we discussed billing. I said it's, it's two weeks. Um, you get us a bill, we'll get you the, the check. I think we'll be okay.
Sounds good. I would entertain a motion to accept uh, this representation for the Board of Appeals.
Second.
Wait, you just, you didn't make a motion?
No, I would.
So you made it.
Yeah, you go for it.
I would like to make a motion, we consider the representation for town of Reedfield from, I just lost their name.
Perkins Thompson.
Perkins Thompson.
I'll second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to approve Perkins Thompson to represent the town as uh, at the Board of Appeals meeting upcoming. Is there any further discussion? All in, oh, go ahead.
I just want to s- state, it does say on page two, we will not be requiring a retainer for our legal services. What we expect at the town will honor our billing policies. So we are covered.
All in favor? Thank you very much. We move to our next item, consider engagement with mainland development for design services uh, at Reedfield Corner.
All right, this is exciting.
Interrupt and ask that we extend the meeting for, do you think five minutes is long enough?
I hope so.
Mm-hmm.
I'll make a motion, extend the meeting for five minutes so we can finish.
Second, all in favor? Great.
Thank you.
Let's uh, move to item twenty-two oh nine one, engagement for mainland development for design at Reedfield Corner.
Uh, yeah, so this is exciting. Um, we've been talking about this project for, for a number of years. Uh, and we do have reserve funds available to cover um, design and construction. Um, I don't believe that we will have enough to cover the, the full construction cost, but we can at least get started uh, with the design phase. Um, and get plans together for what will be. Um, um, and get plans together for what will be, um, safety improvements in front of the, um, the Mason Hall. Um, these were brought up to the town by the Age Friendly Committee. Um, the, um, the, the Mason, uh, owners of the Masons, uh, the Masons, I guess, as an organization.
They are.
Support, uh, the improvements. Um, we've talked to the post office as well. We have a few different stakeholder groups involved. The intent is to change the grade, um, and to, um, get rid of those two, uh, parallel parking spots that cause, uh, view obstructions and, um, winter safety hazards and, 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 uh, as we go down the list. Um, this, what will essentially, um, the design that will happen will give us more or less an extension of the type of curbing that's in front of the store, uh, in front of the, uh, Mason's Hall, uh, with the addition of a, a bit of a re-grading and re-orientation of that, um, ADA, um, uh, access so that we can have ADA, um, coming from, um, different directions, from the street, from the sidewalk, to get up onto that, um, building. So, uh, it will be multifaceted improvement. And, um, I guess I said, meet, meet a lot of different needs. DOT is okay with this. Um, their statement to me, and I think I said this before, was do whatever you want. We need to approve it, and you need to spend the money. So, so that's where we are.
Okay.
Uh, and I hope we can move this one forward.
So this may include, um, re-grading and possibly paving alongside of the building for the entrances that you've spoken of?
Uh, it would all be on the front side. We don't have any ownership or desire to go into the, um, the back parking lot, the side parking lot. This is all out front.
But so we would put an ADA entrance on the front side rather than just the one that's there on the back side?
Yes, if, if possible, so that people coming from the sidewalk could, could go up, um, could go up there, but we'll, um, that's part of the design process is to see if it's even possible. We, we think it may be. Um, it, it is a fairly steep grade. Um, what we wouldn't be doing is, is starting on the downslope side and coming back up. We can start from potentially the high side where that current, um, curb cut is and do a switchback, get people laid up quickly onto that. We're right now, they're looking at a, a two-foot or eighteen-inch, um, barrier. So.
I would make a motion to accept the proposal agreement for professional service for the post office sidewalk design as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, uh, to approve this, uh, work for mainland development and their design services.
And authorize the town manager to sign. Can that go in your second?
That is an addendum.
I second that.
Yep. Um, is there any further discussion about this item?
Can I just ask, that's the only part of that corner that's being affected, right? Is it front of the post office?
Yes, uh, that, that's it. The, what's in front of the store would stay the same. Um, we wouldn't go any further down. Um, the one thing that I will add is that, um, I did talk with Rick about this, and I think he just forgot to mention it, but we're also going to be, um, with this project. Um, we're, um, replacing the curb that was, or a portion of the curb that was removed from the fire station parking lot seven, ten years ago. Um, because when we did the addition and expansion, um, the DOT has been really after us about that sixty or eighty-foot curb cut there. Um, we're going to have to do some pavement marking and also, um, build in a, a, a drivable curb, um, around where those parking stalls are, um, next to the adjoining property. So there's a small piece that's outside of the scope of that one area, but it's, it's the fire station lot, so.
All in favor? Thank you very much. Um, item twenty-two oh nine two is an item that we are looking at for town manager review and contract renewal process. This is something that we are required to do in October of each year, but this year we didn't do that. Uh, Eric, you want to talk more about it?
Um, sure, yeah, it's an annual review process. Um, we are hoping to switch over from, um, doing my review in October, which is when I was originally hired, to doing it, um, at, at a later time. So this is actually not, not a terrible thing, um, that coincides with the budget process and also with the fiscal year, uh, because I would, um, it would be awkward. We would start off in June with a budget, and then I would do my contract negotiations. Um, and that's not, not ideal for anybody. Um, adds a lot of uncertainty. So, um, my hope is that we, by doing this now, uh, we can prepare for, um, any potential changes, um, to take effect uh, July one, as is the case with all other municipal employees.
Sounds good.
Um, so I'd like to make a suggestion, um, and see if it, uh, meets with Eric's approval. Uh, since we did not do this in October and it's budget season to get this moving along, that we do a limited scope review for this time, um, and have it just be the executive session piece with the select board. Um, and that we set a new schedule at that time, as Eric was just mentioning, and on the next review, do the full three sixty with the input from other parties. Uh, COVID's just messed everything up, and I think it's important for us to get this done expeditiously, um, for Eric to meet his contract, for us to meet our responsibilities, and for the budget as mentioned.
With the idea that the, this year, the process will be full and robust and what we would refer to as a normal review. Yes?
Not right now, but the next one.
The, right, for twenty twenty-two, the one we're, the one we're catching up on is sort of a truncated executive session, but the one that we are supposed to have done by this October is a totally normal, robust review. Does that make sense? Am I saying that correct? Any further debate questions about that?
So the next thing would be when to schedule this, and we are meeting on the thirty-first, and do we have a very full agenda, Eric?
Uh, we're going to get there pretty quick. If we are, we are holding that, um, tabletop.
The tabletop, yeah.
I think, I would suggest that with that in mind and with, um, broadband, um, that we are going to be at the limits of what we want to do, uh, in one evening. So, um, we could either do it very briefly, um, or, um, I, I mean, I'm fine with February.
Our next meeting would be February twenty-eighth.
Ooh. Yeah.
Isn't it the fifteenth?
Fifteenth.
Oh, sorry. Yep, I had, it was hidden. You are correct. February fifteenth. Sorry about that.
Is that in, is that timely enough for the budget?
Yeah, absolutely. What I'm going to do is I'm going to look at CPI numbers, because right now my budget, um, or my, my, um, my, uh, increase, uh, is tied to the Consumer Price Index. I will rough that out, um, and that'll be a really good start, and we'll go from there.
Good.
Um, then I would suggest that we have an executive session, um, thirty minutes, Dennis?
Yes.
Prior on the fifteenth. Cause I know this is hard for those of you who work. Is the fifteenth a time when we could meet at six?
That's a Tuesday.
And we could also do it after, too. I mean, we've done executive sessions at the end of the week to accommodate. Uh, if you want to stay.
Kai-boshed, Kai-boshed. Um, so then, yes, let's plan on an executive session review, uh, for Eric on our regularly scheduled meeting, February the fifteenth.
And we don't need a motion for this.
Nope. But we do need a motion to adjourn.
So, one discussion.
Oh, yes.
Uh, uh, I apologize. Um, the, um, other business, we have the two, uh, proposals from, uh, mainland development and from, um.
Yeah.
Uh.
Oh, was that on here? I'm sorry, 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 sorry.
Um, it's not on the agenda, but, um, together, these two items would exceed, um, the expedient, um, uh, uh, approval process for spending money. Individually, they don't. I think it's worth mentioning that, uh, if the board would like me to proceed with this component, uh, it would be most appropriate to have a motion to allow me to do that because it really is one project, and it's six thousand dollars, which is over the threshold.
And are you speaking of, of the?
Reedfield, uh, Fairgrounds.
Oh, gotcha. Okay.
I would make a motion to accept the mainland development proposal and the RS Leonard proposal and authorize the town manager to sign each.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the mainland proposal and have the town manager, uh, be authorized to accept both? Is there any discussion?
This is what we discussed previously tonight.
I have a, just a little bit, but this was, this is where we're going to, like, redo the the plans.
Um, in part, uh, really, the, the most expense is actually in the process of, um, having facilitated public meetings. But yeah, it all feeds into that final plan revision. Absolutely.
And it's going to vote? Did I see that somewhere? It might go on a warrant?
No, there was a question by the Reedfield Ca, Conservation Commission about, eh, when it's all said and done, will it go to the, the warrant? That's, that's, I believe we're on the same page. Yes, ma'am.
So that might happen, like be on?
It, it has to. I mean, it has to go through the budget process. So that's, um, it's, it's, um, de facto, we'll go to town.
Yeah.
Because all we had authorized last year was up to fifty thousand dollars with forty-five coming from donations, and this is rough. Um, five coming from the town coffers. Um, and we're, we're already, um, we've fully expended that five. We've added the sixth from the select board. Um, and so we really need to go back to the voters on this without, without question.
We put about the money, not about do we want the ball fields or not.
Right.
It depends on how we write the article.
Yeah, it's up to the select board.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we can discuss that at that time. Okay.
All in favor? Thank you very much.
And now, Ralph?
Yes, ma'am. Is it?
I would, uh, there's a, good, it's been.
We adjourned.
Is there a second to it? Uh, excellent. It's been moved and seconded to adjourn this meeting. All in favor? Thank you very much. We'll see you next time.